One nation, under God, indivisible, the good or evil, justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Our first item up is our open public forum. If you're not on the agenda, this is the time we allow you to have two to three minutes to discuss any item that you'd like to consider. Seeing nobody here, we will move on to our approval of the agenda for this evening with the corrections that are made in yellow on your dial.
Corrections.
Additions.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with these newest corrections that we've added.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of meeting minutes from June 6th and June 21st. Is there any questions or comments on the minutes? Or a motion to approve?
I didn't see anything in there, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of bills paid. Anybody see anything in there that didn't understand or question?
Yeah, I had just one question on, it's MARC, or M-A-R-C, weed filler. $385.95, what would that be?
We spray weeds and...
For, is that all the work time or just one area?
Yep.
Okay. That's a tank that they put on.
Okay.
I was wondering where that went to.
Anything else?
Nope.
If not, I look for a motion to approve the bills paid. Don't move.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda for this evening, Resolution 151-18, approval of June 2018 journal entries. Item B is Resolution 152-18, approval of June donations, and those two are both made by Falcon Bank. One is for the multi-use shelter out at Centennial Park, and the other one is for the arena sign that they are putting up at the arena, their new sign. Those are the two donations. Item C is Resolution 154-18, authorization of Minnesota law for gambling, LG 220, exempt permit for Catholic United Financial Council at the St. Peter and Paul School and Parish Center on August 26, 2018. Item D is acceptance of people's service June report. Those four items is your consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the resolutions. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. At this time, we'll meet our new candidate for our sheriff, Bob Dickhouse.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Like I said, like the mayor said, my name is Bob Dickhouse. I'm running for the office of Stearns County Sheriff. A little bit about myself, first of all, you know, just so you know, I'm going around to all the city council meetings, township boards, anybody, anybody that let me stand in front of them and talk, which any good candidate would probably do. So, I usually start off and just say, "You guys are doing a great job." Because you hear that so often, right? I usually didn't when I was on a board, I never heard that. But, "You're doing a good job. You're doing a good job." Anyway, I'm for Stearns County Sheriff. Lifelong resident of Stearns County, was born and raised in Melrose. I live there today with my wife and her three boys. Actually, two of them have grown up and moved on, but we have raised a nice family out there in Melrose. I actually started my law enforcement career 27 years ago here in Richmond. This was my first full-time job. I was hired by Chief Roger Weers. I was able to work in town here for about a year and three quarter, almost two years. It was a wonderful learning experience working here in town. A little bit slow pace, which was a good way to learn. I didn't have, I wasn't even through my full-time training yet when I started working here, and Roger helped me out as a part-timer, and then hired me full-time once I was fully licensed. So, it was a great time to, a great way to learn about law enforcement. The River Roost was in full swing, so there was plenty to do, and it was fun. And people, you know, they really embraced me coming into town, you know, most people did, but can't make, not can everybody, everybody can't be friends, I guess, but anyway. After a while, I got a job over in Cold Spring. My goal was always to be a deputy sheriff. That's what I wanted to do my entire life. It's really why I got into law enforcement. So, I worked in Cold Spring for a short time until Sheriff Kastrieva called me and said, "Hey, Bob, I think we need you to come to work for us." So, I started in 1993 as a correctional officer for Stearns County. Worked in the jail there for a couple of years until an opening was on the road as a patrol deputy in 95. So, 95 through 2000, I worked patrol. Again, right back to Richmond, here I was, driving around the mean streets of town, but got to go everywhere else in the county as well. Again, great time, a great way to learn about law enforcement, you know, back, working with people that you knew, very comfortable, and it was fun. Did that for a number of years. Eventually, was patrol sergeant, made detective, and detective medical examiner, and then in 2010, I was promoted to the position of patrol lieutenant where I am today. As patrol lieutenant, we do a variety of work. It's mostly administrative position. My, most of my day is spent taking care of the fleet. We have over 100 vehicles that we maintain. I oversee the dive team and the drone team. Maybe you've seen me on the county board, kind of bragging up my drone. You know, they keep telling me they're gonna come and fly it, but I haven't seen them do it yet, but they're waiting for me to show up with it at one of the meetings, I think. So, I've got a bunch of things I do. Budgeting, I work with Sheriff Goodmanson, who's the appointed sheriff right now. Prior to him, I was Sheriff Sanner for, well, I worked with him for all 14 of his years as sheriff, but as administrator, only about eight or so, or six of them, actually six. And then, worked through that. Really, the reason I want to be sheriff is I have a strong desire to work with some of the best law enforcement officers in the county. I've been with the sheriff's office for 25 of my 27 years in law enforcement. I've worked with many, many, or most of the people that are there. Of course, there's some younger ones coming up now, but worked very hard to develop everybody. You know, people above me developed me, gave me the skills that I needed to be a sergeant and a detective and then administrator, and I do the same thing for my people, the ones that are working their way up. So, it's my goal to get those people to take my job someday, and to have the best department we can have, and continue the professional and wonderful place it is to work today for everybody there, keeping the citizens of Stearns County safe and well-covered, so. The other part is, you know, I really want to repay the people of Stearns County for the time and money that they spent on me. You know, I assume that, you know, if people keep me around, they would like to see me, you know, eventually run the sheriff's office. That's kind of the goal, is to develop staff, get them ready for the position, make sure that they're good enough to do it, and they have the skills to do it, and take over the position. Unfortunately, I can't apply for the job. I have to actually run for it, but we can handle that, and we'll get out, and we'll been out, like I say, talking to the city councils and the communities, and anybody that'll let me talk in front of them to, you know, tell them about myself, and hopefully have them support me as the Stearns County Sheriff. So, don't want to take up too much time, just want to briefly, you know, tell you a little bit about myself. Of all the places I've been doing these meetings, this is the kind of the one I looked forward to, looked forward to for the most time, you know, because I knew I, you know, I could tell my story about having started here, and, you know, worked with Bernice Evans and Roger and Junior, and Junior's gone now, but, you know, some of the guys, Rick on the fire department and stuff too. It was a great experience. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, I appreciate your support, and thank you.
I do have a question for you. What do you see as the biggest challenge in the county?
Well, I think the challenges haven't changed that much. They've just, they've kind of come at us in a different direction. We still have, you know, methamphetamine, heroin's coming in, you know, drugs of choice are still there. Every day, our drug task force, or what we call the VODA Violent Offenders Task Force, works to, you know, track people down, does, do buys, you know, develop cases, and arrest people that are bringing the dope into the county. Drugs, you know, in itself are a menace, but that, it's the things that they bring with that. People become desperate. People need drugs, they don't have a job, can't hold a job, they steal, they burglarize. You know, they're, you know, eventually, they're assaultive, who knows what. It just, it just kind of spirals them out of control, and ultimately results into a mental health crisis, where we are today with no real place to put people in mental health crises, other than the hospital or jail. Currently, our jail is full. It's been full for five or six years, much of it due to the mental health crisis and the drug epidemic in Stearns County and around the area, not just us. We currently have 30 to 50 people housed out every single day of the year, you know, between $50 and $65 per day per inmate. We spend a ton of money on that, because there's really no else to go with them. You know, they're desperate, and they're in crisis, and they end up in jail oftentimes. Sometimes hospital, but oftentimes jail. So, yeah, it's not like there's a new scourge on the horizon. It's kind of the same stuff. There's other ways. The internet is a wonderful, wonderful tool that we all use every day, but it has a dark side. You know, the dark side of that is, you know, human trafficking, prostitution, you know, theft, scams. We get weekly stories or reports of people losing money through internet scams, you know, that just don't understand the internet as well as maybe the younger generation does, and they can get caught up in that. So, we have to have people that are well-trained, well-prepared to handle those types of cases, and be able to assist those folks. Oftentimes, it's sad stories, and their money is usually gone, unless we can track them back, but oftentimes, they're in a different country, and they've spoofed the email address, and, you know, they're good at it, and it's tough to get. Our best defense against that is good education about internet. And that's where we have to make sure our young people understand, you know, the threat behind the internet. It's not all Game of Thrones, or whatever the games are that the kids play nowadays. You know, there's a dark side to that, and it's lurking just beneath the surface, waiting for an opportunity to strike. When I was an investigator, one of my prime tasks was forensic investigations. I did child pornography. We hunted down people through the internet that were either trading, selling, or keeping child pornography, collecting. There's people that are collectors of it, you know, it's like anything else, it's crazy, but they could also sell it and trade it. So, we would hunt those folks down, and hopefully, you know, snag their computer, take it down forensically, and then, you know, track it back to them and charge them with it, charge them with possession of child pornography, and/or manufacture of it, which is a felony. So, yeah, I wish there was a quick and easy answer for that, but there's a lot of things that go on. Thankfully, it's not an epidemic everywhere, and we have things that spite. We still have burglaries, we still have thefts, you know, drunk driving's always an issue, things of that nature, but we have a strong patrol division. Those guys bring in a lot of information for the investigators to work at, and we've done a good job. We've had some great success stories recently, but there's always more work to do, and we'll keep plugging away at that. So, how is that for a short answer?
I didn't expect a short answer, so.
There you go.
All right.
Anything else I can answer for you folks?
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you. It's good to see you all.
Nice to see you too.
Thanks.
We'll move on to number eight, engineers' report before you have feasibility report on your, with your big map.
So, if you remember, tonight, we will need to approve the plans on how we want to move forward with the 2019 project, and then we'll need to approve the feasibility report and set this proposed public hearing for August. Those are the three items that I will need for you guys to move forward on this portion.
So, the feasibility study was with the changes that we had asked for last month?
Yep.
About pulling the sidewalks out of First Street?
Yep.
South and First Street North?
Mm-hmm.
Which lowered our cost a little bit?
Little.
Not a lot, but a little. And as of right now, all seven of the street projects are still listed?
Yep.
Does anybody see anything that sticks out in their mind that doesn't seem right? Otherwise, I'm pretty sure Dave went once or twice over this to make sure it was right. There is no questions on the feasibility study, I'd look for a motion to approve it.
I would make that motion. I really enjoyed reading it.
So, the Resolution 153 will approve the feasibility report, and then we'll set the public hearing. So, do we want to look at dates in August before we approve everything?
We're gonna have it on our regular...
That's up to you guys, if you want to do it on, it would be August 1st would be our next meeting, or August 16th would be the workshop meeting. We will be doing budget in one, if not both of those meetings also, so.
I would say do it on August 16th.
I would agree with that.
At 6:30 or soon, soon after?
Make the public hearing at, yeah, 6:30.
To make it fair. We've always been there, so people understand that we're not tilting them off.
So, Larry, that's your motion then?
Yeah.
Approving Resolution 153-18, the feasibility report, and set in public hearing for August 16th at 6:30.
Second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Can I just get a formal motion of you guys approving the plans and everything then for the 2019 project to move forward?
Planned, yeah.
You want a motion on that?
Yep, please.
Larry, do you want to make that motion or not?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Larry made the motion, Tim, second it. Right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Is that all you need for the 2019 project?
Yes. Then we're staying on track, on schedule, and we'll go from there.
So, anybody that's involved will be getting a letter?
We'll put notices and everything out, but yes, yep.
All right. Anybody have anything else on the feasibility report? Or we're gonna move on. All right, personnel policy. Did anybody have a chance to look at, look through it? See all the changes?
Yep.
Anybody see anything?
In the packet, just to save paper, I just gave you the areas that were affected, added, changed, or however.
I had one question. City driving policy.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering, I read through it, and I didn't see where it said anything about having anybody else in the vehicle. Like, family members or something like that, so that...
Do we want that in there?
No. Well, is, how does that work if there's other than, somebody other than the city employee in that vehicle and gets in an accident, how is that?
We can have a waiver form available, have them sign off, that the city wouldn't be liable for anything, but...
I mean, even if somebody else were to jump in the vehicle and ride with, just, you know, somewhere, another contractor, or...
Right.
Somebody to jump in if something would happen. But, do you want, do we want to check with league on that, or if it's necessary, or attorney with that? I mean, do we have to have something like that in there? I mean, would our, does our insurance currently cover something like that? That's what I'm saying, before we put it in there, does it already cover that?
And we can, I can double-check that area.
And I think before we do anything on that, I mean, but I think that's something that makes sense.
Right.
It should be, but I can double-check before...
That's all you need to do.
If it's covered under no-fall insurance under standard automobile policy.
Yeah.
Right, so, but I'm just saying, since it's a city policy.
I'll double-check on that.
I think everything else, I think I look at.
I did run across anything other than that.
Okay. I can bring that information to the next meeting for you guys then to make a final decision, if that makes you feel more comfortable.
Well, it's just...
That way, we can, we can word it, or change it, or not change it, or at least be able to know what's what before deciding.
Or if you can find that information out, and it's already covered, then just move on, right?
That's up to you guys, however you want to approve this.
No, but I mean, you're gonna check into it, and then if it's already covered through our insurance, we won't have a big issue with it. And then just, we can run it through, first thing. Office first, just do it, have it done, and back them down. Is that what you want to do, or do you want to, you want to pass it and just put the stipulation on it?
Up to you guys.
I mean, I'm just trying to cover some time and... Yeah, that's just one little item, I think, that could be resolved.
So, you guys can make a motion approving this contingent on how the insurance part is covered for passengers.
And we can, we can adjust if need to on that. Thanks for getting this done. I mean, this is, I mean, there is so much that has not been, I mean, has changed so much, you know, here in the last 10 years. I mean, whether it's been, you know, especially the social media, this website stuff, I know there's been a lot of that, I know there's been things we've always talked about, some of the, some of the personal policy like that, and I thank you for bringing that up, because it does, it has to be covered, just to make everybody aware, and having that just makes us, hey, see and talk before you know what's out there. So, on that notion, I will make a motion to accept the personal policy with the changes that were highlighted in the policy that you brought forward, as well as if, on that insurance basis.
Okay.
Okay? I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, we'll move on to public works, equipment, the Kubota that we had talked about last month?
Yes.
Came up with a little snag.
It did. We were looking at a special financing for the Kubota. You guys approved and moved forward to get it. Arnold's had mentioned to us we would be able to get it for five years interest-free. Once we went forward to do it, Kubota themselves had told Arnold's, because we're getting the state bid, that unfortunately, we would not be able to get that sort of financing. I've talked with Arnold's themselves, they're willing to work with us a little bit. It came down to $20,754 to buy the Kubota altogether with the state bid. They're willing to have us pay, or letting us pay $10,754 this year, and then letting us wait until the next budget year to do the remaining $10,000. They would do a special financing through Arnold's themselves. That way...
No interest on it at all, then?
No. No. There'd be a little bit more paperwork, and they would need proof of insurance, which I said neither of those things would be an issue on our end here, being the financing would be different than what we last presented. We wanted to bring it back to the council and make sure that, moving forward, it was still okay.
Ultimately, it's gonna cost the same amount of money, just a matter of...
Just a little bit more money upfront and then the backside, so. That was all, you said the money was there?
Yes.
We have it, so it's not...
Yep, the funds are there. Yep, we're just gonna be paying it, you know, quicker than what we had thought. So, I just need a motion as far as how do we want to move forward.
I don't see a problem, but thank you for bringing it to our attention, that, what had happened with it. It's fine with me, I have no problem with it all.
Would you like that?
Quite frankly, I was kind of, kind of, when we said that, there was no, I kind of like, wow, that's unusual, but now we, it's the truth, so.
Make a motion to approve that, trying that payment plan that you've come up with there.
Okay, perfect.
Larry made the motion.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to lawnmower.
You guys were given a quote from New Adventures, should be in your new pack, or new pileup from tonight. It was brought to our attention that the mower that's being used out at the water and sewer plants is kind of needing to be replaced. Another thing is, it's old. It should have been replaced a long time ago, it's been used multiple times. Larry, it would be in your new packet. Yep. So, Kevin and Chad have been working to, they test drove the tractor, or the lawnmower also, to make sure it's gonna work in the areas with the hills, everything that's out there. It comes down to $3,499.95. They will give us a trade-in of $500 for the current mower we have, which brings it down to under $3,000. We're looking at splitting the costs of this between one-third water, one-third sewer, and a third parks, because then it would be a backup lawnmower in the event that parks would need it also. So, moving forward, we just need to know that this is okay to purchase.
For one, they're supposed to have two, two bids, not one. Other than that, I don't have a problem approving it, but I would like to see the second bid just for the fact that we're supposed to do our due diligence of having two bids for everything that we buy. So, I like that they went through...
They keep it local.
I like that.
Yep.
But, for, we're supposed to get two bids for everything before we accept it.
Okay, I will let them know.
Okay. So, you can have that for our August meeting?
Tessa, you said between a third water, a third parks, and third what?
Sewer. Yep, so, it would, you know, be about $1,000 each, or all, yep.
All right, we'll move on to alley issue. Can you explain that?
Yep, so, a property line issue on Grant Avenue was brought to our attention. The city spent a lot of time working with the county to find out what was going on, what the issue actually was over there. We found out that there is a 16-foot alley, which Gordy has gone out and staked it, and this alley runs from Grant to Hall. So, I did put a map in your packet to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. It sounds like well over 10 years ago, the county had put a new curb in there, and they did a straight across instead of a drive-through, like there is over on the Hall Avenue side of things. This alley is public property, and no one would be able to claim eminent domain on it, regardless of where they think their property line is, what they have on it, or anything of that sort. Looking at everything, analyzing it, and actually seeing what's what, the city should not make any changes to the way this alley is set up. No one needs access from this alley for their property. There's no garages, there's no sheds, there's no nothing that they would need to be driving through there to get to. The city is looking, right now, we'd be doing a mailing out letter to let those property owners know that they're at risk by having things, personal property, bushes, gardens, whatever, in this alleyway. They're at risk of any damages that may happen to it, because there is also a utility, utility easement that runs through there. So, in the event XL, Midco, anybody who needs to go through there, the city, whoever, needs to go through there, they have the access, and if there's any damage, there's damage. There's nothing that can be done, because it is on public property. So, this is more or less just a follow-up of the situation that was going on, and at this point, it's no longer a city issue, and the county doesn't look at it as a county issue also. If there's any property line issues that are going on between neighbors or anything, it's a civil dispute, and at this time, there's, we're not spending any more time on it, except for mailing out a letter notifying all the property owners that they're at risk.
So, this would basically be a non-designated alleyway?
It's an alleyway, but you just can't drive straight through it.
I mean...
It's still public property, it's still gonna, but there are other areas that are alleys that are all grass. They may be drive-through, but...
But technically, they could still come off of...
They can come off from Hall.
The only thing is, is this alley does not have a driveway.
It's a curb.
Yep.
And my understanding is, when they put the curb in, the property on the corner had an access, and they gave it to their shed, and being their shed faced towards County Road 9, they put the access there, where if their shed would have faced to the north, then they would have put it in the curb, would have put, put in the alley to access the alley, but being they put the curb there, the county does not put two curbs back to back, because they only, like even when Casey's put theirs in, they only allowed them 24 feet. They didn't allow them to go to 30, because that's what the county has as a stipulation. So, that, if this would have been an alley and this property's access, there would have been a 30-foot curb, and they don't put them in, they only put 24-foot curbs in. So, my understanding, that's why they got one for his back shed, and then the alley did not get one, because nobody accesses it from the alley.
But we could still...
I just feel at this time, we're better off leaving well enough alone. Why should the city spend money that really, there's not a benefit, nobody has asked for a back alley drive?
What was the dispute then, between the two gentlemen that were...
Where the property line is.
Okay.
So, like I said, there's two big stakes in there now on Grant Avenue that you can see where the 16 feet are, but at this point, it's no longer a county or a city issue, and if there's anything between property lines, that's between the property owners themselves.
But, I mean, so, that could be access from Hall Avenue.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's still a chance to go in if you needed to, I mean, whether it's emergency vehicles or whatever, so, yes.
You're still gonna bump the curb.
Right.
It's just a FYI follow-up for you guys, so you know what was going on over there.
He was one of the two gentlemen that were here last month.
We don't, we don't need to spend any more money on this.
Money or time.
We want to make sure everybody knew what was going on.
Okay, do we have to do anything with that, then?
No.
Just let it go.
All right, then we'll move on to the next item for this evening, is the police department report. Chief?
There is a new report, other than what was in the packet, because it's more updated. So... So under, in your new pile there, Larry, yep.
Sure.
Where are you?
Apologize, that wasn't near last time. Little emergency came up that had to take care of, so wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, so I'm sorry about that. So just to go over a couple of the monthly reports, for March of this year, in Richmond, we had 118 total incidents, nine medicals that we assisted with, four suspicious activities. 54 traffic stops with 68 warnings and 15 citations with three narcotics violations in those traffic stops and then 48 miscellaneous calls for service. In April, we had 101 total incidents, 12 medicals, three suspicious activities, 47 traffic stops with 58 warnings and 14 citations with one warrant arrest and a narcotic violation in those stops. And then 39 miscellaneous calls for service. And then in May, we had 86 total incidents with five medicals, six suspicious activities, 33 traffic stops with 29 warnings and 12 citations. And 42 miscellaneous calls for service. Some of the things that happened since the last time I was here. We received a DARE grant at the end of the year. As you know, this year was the first year that we had the DARE program for the whole Recore School District that Officer SRO Zayas put on for us. So this is the grant for next year's classes. It helps offset the cost for books, shirts, and different stuff that goes into the program. So looking forward to having, that as an option for the schools again next year. Ordinance update, been working with Tessa and Cindy. A number of letters went out beginning of June. Driving around today, it looked like a lot of the stuff had been cleaned up. I know the officer that's handling it is kind of going around and double checking things and following up. And I know Cindy and Tessa have been working with people on that, so I think things are going in the right direction with those. The police and fire chaplain update, the gentleman that wanted to volunteer time, we're backgrounding him right now and just kind of finalizing some things. And hopefully get him going for both Cold Spring and Richmond Fire Department. He'd be willing to be called out for it just to kind of help us on some of the more severe calls, to help with families and that type of thing. So we're just going through the, the background process right now. And once that's done, we'll have him out and about with our officers. So things are going well and I think it'll be a good program for everybody. Squad cars, last time I talked to you guys, we had one that was damaged and the K-9 squad was still being put together. Both of those are back on the road. With that, the handler, the new K-9 had been on the road since middle of June-ish now. In that, they just, I think last week they had a narcotic arrest where they, or a traffic stop where they had enough to end up searching the vehicle. Found enough narcotics for a felony, felony charges. We also were able to seize the vehicle and a sum of money. So they're working well together and being very productive. So they're making a good team so far. And then also just kind of, if you notice anything suspicious out at the parks, we've had some damage at the parks lately, mainly Centennial Park. If anybody sees anything out and about in the evenings or any time during the day that doesn't look right, if they hear noises, we're around 24 hours a day. Give us a call and so we can check it out. If it becomes nothing, I'd rather have us check it than something happens. So if anybody sees anything, definitely give us a call.
Has there been a lot of damage out there?
It's been sporadic. We've had people up on the roof at the pavilion and then also some of the ceiling stuff has been pulled through or pushed up. So it's just people, meaningless, meaningless damage to the parks. And then your stuff with the kids inside the slides with lighters and that, that's gonna happen. Kids are gonna be kids, but some of the more severe damage is starting to happen. It kind of, it goes in streets and when the kids are out of, I'm not saying it's all kids, but when the kids are out of school for the summer, that's when the meaningless damage stuff kind of spikes. So if anybody sees anybody out damaging anything or doing anything, just give us a call so we can follow up on it. And that's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Anybody have anything for them? Did you, did you find out any further on the bikes?
We haven't come up with anything yet, no. I know we got two officers that are working on it, but I will double check, but as far as I know, we haven't heard anything.
Well, I know I've seen something on Facebook that somebody was poking around trying to find out. Alright.
Alright.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Jason.
We'll move on to council reports for us tonight. EDA, Mike?
I don't have a lot really for, to talk about. I just met with the CNC this week. We're setting up a committee for the pamphlets to try to get them together. That's gonna be an ongoing process into 2019. We got a few people out there possibly gonna take advantage of some of our programs. Nothing for sure yet, but we'll just keep plugging along with, with our programs and keeping in contact with businesses.
If they want to get ahold of you for one of the programs, do they just come up to City Hall?
Call, call up here to City Hall, Tessa, we'll, we'll help you out with that. Lot of information. There's programs out there for new businesses and existing businesses. And we will, we'll not have a July meeting. We don't have a lot on our agenda, so we decided to not have a July meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Move on to planning commission. Larry, your turn.
We didn't have a meeting in July.
June.
Or June, I think.
We'll move on to Recore Trail.
Recore Trail, we had a very brief meeting this morning. Basically, it was just to settle up with Cold Spring. They just wanted to do some access to some easement on, crossing some utility stuff, so. But that was all we had. Nothing on the funding right now. We're gonna try to get ahold of Heidi and, and see if there's something else we could do since we didn't get some of the bonding money that we were hoping for. It didn't happen, so. Heidi was gonna do some, check on some more items that we could possibly do.
See what other options there are for funding.
We need, we need that funding to finish up that spot between Cold Spring and Rockville. It's a section that we'd love to finish up and so we could connect all our cities and communities together, so. That's where we're at right now. Next meeting, if it does happen, if we find anything else, will be next, be August 2nd.
I've noticed traveling back and forth, that there's a lot of activity on that trail. Extensively. I mean, between Rockville and, or Cold Spring and Richmond.
It's huge. I mean, I mean, Jason can probably vouch to that. It's, he sees a lot there. I, I don't see, I mean, it's like anything else, you know, it's, it's well-used. We've maintained it very well. Cold Spring and Richmond, our section over here has been, been taking care of it very well, cleaning up, you know, cutting, making sure that's done. You know, Rockville's doing their little section that they got over there, but it's just a great asset for our communities of intertwining back and forth. And I know some people are riding bikes to the Granite Company and people just for exercise and, but it's just, it's been a phenomenal thing for us. And I can tell you, I mean, many mornings, I go to the post office and there's five, six, seven cars at 9:00, 10:00 already. And they're loading bicycles all the time there. I mean, that's great for our community. People are coming and they're coming from all over. And I've talked to some of them, they're, you know, from St. Cloud or other communities coming to check our roads, our little trails, so.
Check out a blue bike and take a look.
Yeah. I just hope we leave our blue bikes. I mean, they can, they're more of a help. They're free to use. We just didn't want somebody to take off with them. So, but, but that's something also, like I said, we do have that program so they can use it. So it's an opportunity to deceive all the, all we have to offer over here, so.
Alright, thanks, Tim. Anybody have anything else asked about Recore Trail? We'll move on. Other matters of concern, building inspector?
Yes, I just wanted to let you guys know I'm gonna be putting a notice out for two, maybe three weeks of just looking for new bids, proposals for different building inspectors. Just to see what's out there. It hasn't been done for many years for the city, so just make sure that we're getting the best deal out, out of it all. And we can do what's best for the community and make sure if there's something that we can do that's cheaper for the residents. That's maybe easier, more efficient, whatever it may be, but just making sure that we're doing our due diligence to check. So just to let you know, and nothing may change. We may stay within Spectrum, but at least we can say we've gone out and looked. So.
Due diligence.
Alright, well, item B is the letter of complaint. In the back page of your packet, we received a complaint. Obviously, we don't, we actually now have ordinances that actually have a little bite to them now. So some of these issues that this complaint makes reference to are being cleaned up by our ordinances, by being able to send something out and actually keep moving forward. And he also was at our last council meeting too.
The place of concern is being dealt with in the process that we can. So we're not letting anyone's, you know, special person slide. We're not doing any special favors. They're getting the letters, they're getting the, the warnings and the work on too that it needs to be cleaned up and it needs to be taken care of and stay that way. So we're doing the best we can with it.
So if somebody asks you about this complaint, you know, we are actually following through with it, trying to get it cleaned up and pushing forward.
I think we've been working on it more too in the past few years than maybe it has been further back.
Way, way back.
Way back.
I could have this letter.
Yeah. So it's been something that at least has been on our radar, not just this year. It was last year and, and other times too. So it's just to nip it in the, nip it in the bud and get it taken care of.
We're not gonna address the end of the letter.
No.
Okay.
No.
I, I mean, I know that, Jason, we appreciate you guys going out and especially this last couple of years, you really have went out and diligent, trying to work and clean that up and, and be awareness to everybody. So I want, as a person up here in the council, I want to thank you for keep doing that because it does, it makes our city life. Next week, we do have River Lake Days and we want to, everybody to see what our city looks like, and so, thank you.
Alright, next up is, our next meeting is August 1st at 6:30. That'll be our televised meeting. And the other thing I want to bring up is obviously next, next weekend is our big event to hear in town with Richmond River Lake Days from July 19th, starting with the garage sales. And finishing up on Sunday with the breakfast in the morning. The parade is at 7:00 PM on Saturday night. I just wish all the residents, you know, hopefully people mind their manners and, and be respectful of other people's stuff on this weekend. Because I know Jason and I get a few calls of disorderly people. But it's a great showcase for Richmond and I, I hope everything is cleaned up nicely like they always have it. And Gordy does a really nice job on Sunday morning getting everything cleaned up on Main Street. You got a hard time finding anything laying around, which is, I think a compliment to the city workers as well for cleaning it up, so.
And I also like to add, you know, it's, it's because we are having the garage sales to start, you know, on Thursday. I know there's a lot of people darting in and out all the time and please just slow down and be, be careful and keep an eye out. Because it's not only parents out there, there's a lot of little kids that with their parents that are in and out of these cars, so please slow down.
Anybody have anything else to add? Not. Thank you, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.